Okay. Good evening, everyone, to our September twenty fifth workshop. This will be very workshopy tonight, so a few things we need to talk through. The first item is opportunity to request a vote to add or modify an agenda item. I have a couple that are more about order than they are about adding. First, the the PBA items should be in executive session at the end because they relate to collective bargaining. That was to be an executive session at the end. So I make a motion to move that to the end. Second, favor? Any opposed? Okay. The next is, we got a Kelly actually got two bench requests. DeCuna was on the agenda Friday. And the second request did not get added when the agenda got updated, but it is part of her documentation to us, her emails to us. So I'd like to add the approval of the Odell or reviewing the request for Odell as well as DeCuna. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? And then on, in terms of order, if folks are okay with this, I'd like to flip the order of reports and do the court report first and then go into accounts report. Do we have Michelle? We do. Any objections to order flip? Any other requests? Okay. None, we move into court report. Now, obviously, we don't have the court clerk with us tonight. We have Michelle, who will have some insight, and Greg and I have been looking at this, Aaron and I have also had some discussions. So I have here the June, July, and August, so the first quarter reports, and Michelle, this will, this will, this will bleed into discussion of your report. Because I'm trying to understand how your budget item A, O.
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. I had a little technical difficulty there. Michelle, before I, before I continue, did, where did I leave off? Where did, where were you not able to hear anymore?
I heard A for the account number, and then that's it.
So it's A zero zero two six one zero 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 fines and forfeited bales. So I don't know if this is a lag time issue, but when I look at the three, the three court reports for June, July, and August, there are, it's broken into two pieces, fines, forfeited bales, and civil penalties. And then parking tickets is a separate item. And the parking adds up to fifty two thousand one thirty, and fines and forfeited bail adds up to fourteen two twenty five in Kathy's reports, in the court reports, for a total of sixty six thousand three fifty five. So how does that, how are those numbers carried over into your general fund report? And is it, are we looking at a lag time issue that the numbers are different?
It, it is a lag. So we do cash received. So think about the courts receiving all of their cash in, say, August. Then they reconcile their reports, and the first week of September to coincide with, or the monthly meetings, maybe the second week, the court turns over a check in September, so everything's a month behind in my reporting.
And does your, does that particular budget line, the two six one zero, reflect fines, forfeited bales, civil penalties, and parking tickets in one, in one line?
Yes.
So if we were to take those numbers for June, July, and add them together, we would come to forty two thousand nine ninety?
My number also for revenue, it accounts for the money that we have to give back to the state. I'm not sure how Kathy's report shows it, but there is a give back for the, like, we have to collect on behalf of New York State and then turn it around to them. So this number's net. Yeah.
So that's not a separate expense line, that's just?
Yes.
And in Kathy's report, maybe you said this already, but just to be clear, is that the number accrued or the number collected?
Can you repeat that? You said accrued or collected?
Kathy's report. You know, that, that we get every month. Is that the amount accrued or the amount collected?
That's the amount collected in that month, so it could be a ticket from April, it could be a ticket from July, August. It's always the month that she physically receives the payment.
Whatever cash came in, in that reporting period?
Yes.
Does, does that, I, I was confused when I was comparing those numbers. I feel like I have more understanding now. Does anybody else have a question regarding Kathy's report versus? Okay, so then let's move on to Michelle's. Thank you very much, Michelle. Okay. So let's, let's let you take the, take the floor, give us your report.
Okay, one quick change to the written report. Originally, the auditors were supposed to be onsite this week. They had to push back until the week of August twentieth, I mean, October twentieth. So just like a few week delay, not a big deal either way. And then once that's done, they'll probably do a presentation in December or January. But I'm still working on the AUD behind the scenes, and that'll get submitted to the state next week. You know, still working through some of the backend parking stuff to go over the quarterly financial reports. And so it's year to, year-to-date for the fiscal calendar, which is the first three months. For general fund revenues, taxes are ninety five percent collected. That's about on par where we usually are at this time. And then a reminder that if the taxes aren't paid directly to the village by January thirty first, we turn it over to the county for collection, and then the county reimburses us for whatever wasn't paid by residents or property owners. The occupancy tax, there's been discussions that that should start beginning in January for the period of October through December. Franchise fees appear to be low because it's only one month recorded. There's going to be a lot of timing issues, as always in the reports. Some things are quarterly, some things, you know, just take time, like the mortgage tax that we receive comes twice a year, but it also comes two to three months after the period ends. So any questions of something, it's like, oh, why is there zero? It's probably a lag, but feel free to ask just the same thing with the court. You'll see that a lot.
Can you pause for a second, Michelle?
Yep.
I have a question on that. Oh, I thought you said something about sales.
Yeah, that's all. Let's probably have a county count.
Ah, got it. We did them all at once. Okay, the merchants pay directly. Karen, thank you.
Okay. Parking meter revenues, remember, that's going to appear under budget because we changed the price. However, over the past nine weeks, which is somewhat of a busier season than the winter, we have been trending to be a little over fifty percent. So that means that the occupancy of the spaces on Main Street being paid are a little higher than we projected. But it's still super early, things, you know, can change. But it's trending in the right direction for the budget.
Can I, you said fifty percent? I thought we had projected seventy percent? Did we change that and I forgot?
Nope. So it's fifty percent of the budgeted amount because we went from four dollars to two dollars.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
And then in terms of that seventy percent, I didn't go space by space, but we did project that there would be seventy percent occupancy. But if we're at higher than fifty percent of budget, it tells us that there's more spaces being occupied. Interest rates at the bank are still high. So that's, that's good news there. The village does have a couple money market accounts for the fund balance amounts. New this year, which is supposedly a one-time thing, it's a temporary municipal assistance payment. It ended up being seven percent of the village's AIM amount, so we received that. It was eleven hundred dollars.
I thought it was supposed to be double. I thought they were doing a one-time doubling of AIM.
I'm not sure. We got the amount and the email, and I looked it up, and every municipality got seven percent.
I remember the press release, like when I saw the list. The press, the press release when the initiative was first announced was a bit more than seven percent. Okay, it's still the first time that they raised it in a very long time, but it feels clearly something against. Yeah, yeah. We'll take it. But thank you to Nicon for your good advocacy. And on, on, can I even ask another revenue question?
Yep.
I, I, we sent a reminder to C Street last week for payment in August and September. Have we received that from them yet?
I do not believe so. Maybe Greg would know if it, if a check came in.
All right, so we need to nudge him because I haven't signed the second contract. I told him we, we would, we would counter sign when there was payment. He also hasn't returned the contract. Okay. Thank you.
Any other revenue questions for the general fund before we go on to expenses? Okay. More timing, the attorney line shows zero year-to-date because of a lag. The June, July bills were paid in September. And that's normal, attorneys are usually on, you know, like a six to eight week lag for the bills. At least, engineering contractual is trending a little high right now, but hopefully, a portion of that Fair Street engineering, when a funding source is awarded, hopefully, you know, FEMA or Federal Highway or something else that we can get reimbursed for a good chunk of that engineering.
So I can't remember if I said this the last time we were talking about Fair Street, so just in case, I'll say it again. FEMA has said that we can come back to them with what Federal Highway rejects, which is very likely most of the project, except for one pipe under Fair Street. So all that work, the work is done, we would have to resubmit it. But one question I had, Michelle, I'm remembering that you just got, not so long ago, got final payments for Isaiah's, which was a number of years ago. I would anticipate that whatever we put out is going to take us a while to get back for Fair Street and the other projects. Is that accurate? An accurate assumption?
It can be. I guess it depends on the process. So typically FEMA does take a long time, especially for the closeout. It's more the closeout process, like, so the water, wastewater fence, that was paid in full by FEMA already with less than a year. So I guess it depends on the method of analysis and the steps they take in the backend. But this is where an accrual would come in, you know, so we can accrue it. And it, we don't have a cash flow problem right now, that the village is okay with that. And then we would accurately account for it by making accruals and deferrals throughout the years, as we have had in the past, so that the expenses sit in the right year to match the revenue.
Got it. Thank you.
For municipal building repairs, so again, a, a good chunk of this was the fund balance to pay for, you know, our share, the village's share of Fair Street. But there is, you know, roughly thirty five thousand to be determined for other projects throughout the village, so something for the board to think about as we go, if there's something that needs to be done or wished to be done. We can, you know, add that to a pending list.
And that's separate and apart from, we have separate budget lines for paving and sidewalks.
For, for sidewalks, yes, for drainage. For paving, there's a separate budget line for chips. But there wasn't any budget specifically for paving projects not, that were non-chips related. There's like four thousand in there for pothole repair and little stuff, but not an actual project, but like, so Fishkill Avenue, that would come out of storm drains, so that's covered.
Okay. Well, we're going to talk about, we'll talk a little bit about possible paving step later in the agenda.
Okay.
Michelle, can you say? So you were talking about the engineer/architect contractual line, and were you, and were you saying that that doesn't include, is separate from village hall engineering/architect needs?
Or so the Highlands Architecture and Gerard Associates are being paid from Nicerda?
Dazny.
Dazny, yes, so Dazny, so yes, that would be separate. Those expenses sat in last year. So far from the billing, we haven't been billed anything this year, this fiscal year.
And we did, Laura and Greg and I had meetings with the architect this week, and Michelle joined us for a conversation with our project lead at Dazny to give them an update on where we are. A chunk has been, chunk of that spending has been devoted to conditions assessment and figuring out what to start with. And we had originally hoped that we would be able to do much more with that money than we would. But it looks like it's probably going to get us a roof and a boiler. The Dazny. The Dazny money. So we did talk to him about modifying the scope. So we're in the process of doing that. The roof's the biggest challenge to the building, getting it, getting it watertight. We do, Laura will talk about still pursuing Nicerda money for efficiency upgrades. Before we can go to heat pumps, we need an electrical upgrade. So there's the things, the staging of things is not going to work out in the way that we'd hoped to, so we're, we're sort of reworking how we're, how we're working with Nicerda. The boiler is on the last leg. No one wants to buy another oil-burning boiler, but we can't go into the winter with the boilers not passing inspection at this point. And I would hope that a new boiler will be far more efficient than what we have downstairs. So that would, that can be covered by the Dazny grant as well.
Okay. Two other general fund comments. When we talk about parking meter revenue, so even though the revenue is going down, in theory, the fees would go down. We, I had budgeted about twelve percent in parking meter fees, you know, for credit card servicing and things like that. But it's at about eighteen percent right now. So there's not going to be much savings in the parking meter processing expense line. You know, you would think fifty percent reduction in revenue, fifty percent in expense, but it's not a one-to-one for this. And I just wanted to make a quick note of that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Do, do you know why they're higher than was projected? I mean, I, I know from my own business that the, they kind of nickel and dime you every time you get a bill. So is that what's happening or?
This is, this is strictly Park Mobile. Park Mobile doesn't itemize any bills. I'm sure it's in the contract somewhere. I know that they have a per transaction fee to the village, which is separate and apart from the app. And then there's also a percentage charge for the credit card. And I'm wondering if that percentage is higher because of the transaction fee, you know?
I imagine, yeah, I imagine that the, the per transaction fee, I think we're having more transactions than expected because we're allowing half-hour parking. And the change of rates is actually filling up towards the end of the day, which wasn't full before. So we are having more cars parked, we're getting more average, you know, revenue per, well, not total, but more transactions. And so would be higher. But I'm happy if, if somebody's able to send me the contract for Park Mobile to take a look and try and figure out a little bit more transparency there, or if there's something.
It's not Park, Park Mobile, right? It's
Yeah, Park Mobile.
Sorry, sorry. Isn't that the, we didn't think, we didn't absorb that into the hourly fee, right?
So there's transaction fees, and then there's service fees, like, there there are fees all over the place. And then there's the, this other service fee. So it's like, all of these fees combined, they're really making a, a lot of money on our per.
And I was thinking that it would be helpful, Michelle, and this is a, this is an additional ask on you, but I think it would be revelatory for the board and the public to sort of pull, pull parking into a, a single-page item and identify income, but also the cost of gaining the income. Because there is, you know, you have to spend, you have to spend to earn, and we are spending. We need to spend to get that revenue. And I think it's super important that as we go forward, all of the revenue we think about, we balance off of what the cost is for the revenue. And I think that would make a number of things easier to grasp through this process. Does that sound like a?
Yeah, I'm happy to help Michelle with that. I mean, she's, she's already provided me with some data, I just haven't gotten around to, to looking at it, but.
Does that sound like a reasonable ask, Michelle, to put together something like that?
Yeah, that's, that's not too bad. I have, like Aaron said, I also have a lot, like, I track the income and the expenses in a couple different spreadsheets. So a lot of, I'd say at least sixty percent of the legwork is done, it's just adding in a couple extra columns, so I can work on that.
Great, thank you.
And then the, the last big top, point is health insurance. So when we did the budget, staff has changed. And when we do the budget, we assume the highest insurance because, you know, if someone comes in with a family plan, you have to offer it and everything. But due to some staff changes and situational changes, there should be a good savings in health insurance, you know, upward of like fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year, assuming that staff, as it is today, stays this way through May and that this nice ship doesn't come in with more than a ten percent increase in January. So that's something to keep in mind as we're spending or to help offset the parking. You know, this could be a savings to help offset that the less amount there. And then film also helps with the offset on parking. Any other expense questions or water and sewer questions?
Well, let's, let's first see general. I have tried to see water and sewer, but anybody else have any comments or questions on general fund?
Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, thank you. And Aaron, thank you for working out that tracking, too. Two, two things I have in mind for water, for the water and sewer funds. We have some repairs that need to be done at the generator building at the sewer treatment plant. Can't remember because we don't have totals here, which of the two was tighter, water or sewer on general fund?
On the fund balance sewer?
Excuse me.
Sewers.
Sewer is tighter?
Yes.
Do we know, do you know in, in your head what the balance is?
Maybe two eighty, I don't really know, but it's two hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay.
Whereas the water is like six or seven, eight hundred thousand.
Okay, so Will Angelolo is looking at that generator building now to try to resolve the ventilation issue and, and closing the noisiest portions of that building. So I don't know what the number is going to be yet, but I wanted to know where we're, what, you know, sort of where we're sitting with general fund. It's not going to be anywhere near two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But that's helpful to know. And then on the, on the water side, the remaining piece from the Catskill Aqueduct reconnection that is undone is the pump house. I can't remember if we've all been to the water treatment plant or not, but the pump house sits down in a, in a gully. Very hard to get to, and it is a, it is a tangle of pipes and valves that need to be rationalized and identified, rationalized, and upgraded. It's in a, a really poor location to leave going forward. We should get it to a more accessible place. One of the things that Han has been looking at is once, once the pipes are identified and we know what's, what's feeding where and what direction to fill in that gully so that access to that equipment is at ground level and not a, a huge dip down. I'm happy to go out there with anybody, or Matt's happy to show anybody if you want to see what I mean, but that.
Land gully.
It's a ladder. No, no, it's no water. It's, um, it's that little, that little tiny yellow, white, white shed that. Yeah, so that is where all the valves are, controlling what's going in and out of the, the, the impoundment there. And they're in, they're in really poor condition. And it's not code compliant. I mean, it, there's all sorts of things that need to be adjusted there. So Will, we, we had, we didn't spend down all of our funding with, all of our money with the last contractor because we paused on that project until it could be engineered. So it's an outstanding project that there was money left unspent on that contract. It's last fiscal year, I don't know how that calculates in your figuring, Michelle, but it sounds like the pump house could potentially be something, could potentially be a fund balance item two, is that right?
So, yes, the pump house, you're correct, the, the first contract with contact was unspent. We had borrowed a hundred and eighty thousand, and then the rest was to be paid out of fund balance. And that was all budgeted for last fiscal year. When the contact, contact construction contract was over, at budget time, we didn't include the pump house in this budget. Yes, it can be paid from fund balance, that was the original plan, but there is no line here that's allocating, you know, so fifty thousand from fund balance to pay for that fifty thousand of the pump house.
Part of that was we didn't have, because it hadn't yet been, they had not yet gone back to engineer it, we had no idea what that was going to look like. So now we're, we're getting a better sense, and, and we'll have, when it's time, when they're getting closer to recommendation, we'll have Han come in and make a presentation on it, so we know the scope.
You know, if, if it has to get done, we could amend the budget. If not, it could be maybe like a, a June, July, like a summer project, do all the engineering, do the bidding.
It's going to have to be, it's going to have to be at this point because they're still, they're, they're still trying to figure out what. And, and the best way to approach it, both from a mechanical perspective, but also from a land formation perspective. So they're going to, they need time on it anyway.
Okay, we'll put it in Saks's budget then from fund balance, since it was allocated, went back down to fund balance. We can reallocate it. We just, we won't be able to borrow for it because we already expended it, but that's, that's okay. If any other big projects come up, just keep in mind that we do borrowing in May. So by January, if we need to borrow for water and sewer, it'd be a good time to put up some notices.
So that's a good, that's a good, that, that's a good timeline to give to Han, right? Is to have this sorted for January.
In case it ends up being a bigger project than, you know, the forty or fifty that we were willing to pay out of fund balance.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything on water or sewer? Okay, thanks a lot, Michelle. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
So shifting, I see we have the planning board chair, Justice Charles, with us. Shifting to subdivision. So the subdivision code was updated in twenty twenty one as part of a larger series of updates that were done for the previous administration. An item was, an item was left off, a bit of collateral. So the subdivision code requires, as is standard now in most modern subdivision codes, an impact fee, an impact mitigation fee related to recreation. So if you're subdividing a property and bringing more housing, more residents, that are the offset, one of the mitigation offsets is, or impact offsets is a recreation fee. That schedule, that fee never got added to the schedule. So right now, the subdivision code, which the planning board is following for its review of a subdivision on East Belvedere, directs them to apply a reservation, excuse me, a, a fee that is not part of the, of the fee schedule. And so our attorneys made a recommendation for amounts that we could consider. I asked them to give us sort of a sense of what, what kind of ranges other municipalities are using. The, the most comparable, I think, in terms of community size and s- size and, um, character would, would be Rhinebeck. Um, of the, of the five they gave us, town of Fishkill, village of Rhinebeck, town of Newburgh, town of Lloyd, village of New Paltz. Um, and Jonathan's recommendation based on what he pulled, um, is that we, um, I'll just go read this paragraph. Enlightened provisions contained in village law, state village law, seven dash seven thirty, item four, and seven dash seven two five A, six, and chapters one eleven and one thirty four of the villages code, we recommend that the village board amend the current fee schedule to include a recreation fee. The village board has substantial discretion in setting the recreation fee and should consider the village's current long-term recreation needs as well as potential recreation impacts due to the increased population that results from new lots or units. Given that the marathon site is the only large piece of undeveloped land in the village, village board may wish to consider setting a fee that balances major and minor subdivisions. The most fee, feasible way to accomplish this may be to set a maximum fee up to X per lot or per unit. That can be determined by the village board on a case-by-case basis. The most conservative reading of the village law suggests that rec, meaning the state and, um, enabling legislation suggests that recreation fees must be paid prior to the planning board approving the subdivision plat- or site plan. But it's not uncommon for municipalities to require that the fee be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Therefore, we recommend that the village's fee schedule be amended by adding recreation fee as a new item with a fee of up to thirty-five hundred dollars per lot slash unit, or any amount the village board determines, with a note that the fee is due prior to the issuance of a building. And, and so that would move it later into the process. The property would be subdivided and whoever develops on that subdivided lot would need to pay that fee before getting the building permit. We also recommend that the, the, the planning board make this requirement condition of approval and every resolution of approval involving a new lot or unit and require the applicant to add such a note to the plans. So we're not making this, we're not, we're not making a motion, voting on this tonight because it needs to be done by resolution. But I wanted to sort of throw out that for a topic of conversation and also think about guidance for, um, the planning board related to six. I think that the, the idea of tying it to the building permit makes sense because it doesn't hold up the application that they're looking at now, but it moves it later in the process so that the person who's making the application isn't penalized because we didn't have the fee in place.
Building permit or the certificate of occupancy?
Um, well, he's, he's got um, building permit uh, in, in, in his recommendation. Therefore, we recommend the village's fee schedule be amended by adding recreation fee as a new item. Sure, uh, do, fee due prior to the issuance of the building permit. You're right, it was inconsistent. One paragraph says occupancy and one, uh, one paragraph says permit.
Well, you have to get a certificate of occupancy without a building permit first.
Well, right, but I think he's saying at this point in the process.
This particular application for subdivision is already before the planning.
Right, but there's no application for a building at this point. It's just the subdivision and then there's, it's, they're creating a, a lot to sell.
Certificate of occupancy is really.
Yeah, that's really far down the line.
Down the line. There'd be no way to, to go back if they repeat. That was. Hopefully that was just a typo.
I think, I think it is. We can confirm. Um, because, but that's what I was making the call on, not on that particular note, but I was, uh, making sure I understood his last paragraph before I came into the room tonight. And yes, he was suggesting building. So I guess first is, is, you know, how do we feel about the general range that Jonathan has put forward?
The range is, you know, that were put there varied from two thousand per lot for Newburgh to fifty-five hundred dollars per lot for New Paltz, village of New Paltz.
Yeah.
And, you know, it strikes me that they might be set to sort of, to, to influence, you know, how you know, how, how, how much do we want subdivision or not?
Well, and the reality is we don't have many locations to subdivide. This is one of the, one of the small, like little lots that could be eked out of and existing developments. Most lots in the village are too small to subdivide anyway, which is why he pointed to Marathon. We've got a so much bigger parcel. Jesse, would you say that that's accurate?
Yeah, I think so. There's. This is also the, um, you know, it's not that we haven't seen a, a subdivision request in, in quite a time, uh, so it's not, it's not like we're even getting like one of these a year. It's like one of these every, I don't know, uh, five years.
I think Campbell House. Hey, Reece Ann, could you mute yourself, please?
The woman who did my.
You can get in touch with her and see if you can get it on her screen to mute herself. Um, thank you. Is, if there are a few. Okay, he's got it. Thanks. So I'm, I'm sure that you're right on that. We don't have a lot of, um, subdivision. Well, that's sort of why I was looking at, at the Rhinebeck range. And also town of Newburgh and town of Lloyd have much, much more land developable property.
You said something about having a maximum map. Are these the maximums that are presented here for the other towns and villages? Are these just?
Um, that is not clear from Jonathan's memo. They're maximums or not. It just says provides examples of fees.
They have ranges in other municipalities. I think that's the amount.
So I, I think an important part here is that the fees are different for lot and unit, right? So if you take something like Marathon, that this, I mean, is lot referred to one lot? That's Marathon or it will be fifty lots?
No, it's, well, it's zon- it's zoned. It to allow, to allow subdivision and, and sale of, of parcels, right? So in the case of Marathon, it could be, if it were, if it were up to thirty-five hundred, it could be per unit. And I think the highest number of units, like four, four per building is the highest number of units, right? We have thirty-five hundred times four. Is that right, Jesse?
Well, it's also, uh, there's provisions in the, the Marathon code for, uh, for park as well. Like this is, this is in lieu of, of, of putting parkland, parkland. So, uh, if someone is generating a subdivision and doesn't want to do that, then this is, this is the allowed alternative, um, that they can, they can pay their way out of.
And, and that, the PMU, the PMU section of the zoning code does require recreational spaces to be included in the proposal.
Yeah, I figure what the actual percentage is. I think it's like ten, it's like ten percent or something substantial.
So we don't have to make a determination tonight except to, um, I guess I would make a motion so that we're not penalizing the current applicant at, on Belvedere. I would make a motion to, um, well, am, am I making a motion? We're, we would be deferring, if we do this by resolution next week, to attach it to building permit rather than to subdivision, then we would by, by default be not penalizing this, this applicant.
Because they can proceed with their application.
He can proceed with subdivision, knowing that it's, that we would be tying it. We intend to tie it to building permit.
Would we need to update the code to define that or?
Not the.
Can we do it in the?
In the fee schedule.
Yeah.
Fee schedule. Yeah, so it, we, we can do it by resolution. That, we have to change fee schedule by resolution. And we could do that for next week if people are comfortable with the concept.
I think it's fine. I think that's the right way to go forward.
By the way, I think Erin's side.
I think I'm fine. I just don't think we need a, need a motion. I mean, it's.
No, I wouldn't need a motion. I just, well, guess what I'm saying is, yeah, well, I'll make a motion to ask the, um, the clerk to proceed with developing a resolution for modifying the fee schedule based on the recommendation of the attorney for next meeting. On favor?
Hi.
Hi. Is that giving you what you need, Jesse?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for helping noodle through that.
Yeah.
Okay, next is Laura, uh, related to the Nysirda.
Great. Um, so a couple of dates following up on, um, what the mayor explained earlier in the agenda. Um, we have, we have a current contract with Nysirda um, that includes about fifty thousand dollars for what we had intent for upgrades here in the building. Um, and the contract says, you know, energy upgrades and then it points out heat pumps, which was our original intent. Um, but looking at what's required for the heat pumps, particularly the electrical upgrades and also recognizing the best practice of first you weatherize the building and you make it um, more energy efficient and then you size the heat pumps to that now energy efficient building, which you do in your homes as well. Um, we put the cart before the horse, but so, um, so we have, um, the confirmation from Nysirda that we can reallocate that fifty thousand dollars toward upgrades here that prepare us for heat pumps. So that's basically anything weatherization or electrical upgrade related. So that's good news. So we can proceed with that. Um, and then we have this hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant that we knew about for a while, um, but we had to decide how to spend it. So, um, weatherization will be expensive here as everything is. And so, uh, we are going to put the hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for more weatherization here. Um, and our hope is that we can also do it in a way that addresses some of the stru-, you know, some of the, um, building structural issues.
Yeah, we have maybe, but like. Apparently the news, yeah, yeah, the news group is going to be more inflated. Um, so that's what we have in mind. Um, and that's, and.
Windows, whether windows that are single pane and.
Yeah, and so, um, so I'm actually looking at now getting a better energy audit than the one that we have. That could be more detailed and point out things like windows and doors that the original one didn't, that would hopefully authorize us to use the funding toward that. Because that's what we, you know, I think that that would benefit everybody. Um, and then we'll, we'll keep on our long-term goal for um, electrification of the building and, um, and look for other routes to do that. But as long as we're saying, um, the letter that's before you is, um, is for this hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant um, uh, for building upgrade. Um, and, um, is there any questions? Now, great, well then I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to Nysirda for the one hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant. And then I'll, um, submit it tomorrow. And the other good thing is that, as we know, this money is a, uh, from a, a pot that is quickly running out. So we want to submit this soon to make sure that we don't lose the strength that we are eligible for. We're not holding it long for us until we are. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. So, um, and having got through the occupancy tax is now in place. And thank you to Erin and Greg. Um, came up with a, a fillable form online that can be submitted electronically. It's a self-calculating form. Um, and Greg was able to get certificates out to all of the, um, hoteliers, um, and state-defined B and Bs in the village. So they're on track to be tracking occupancy tax for, for this quarter and a, a first submission, first filing in January. So thank you for that. And it's what, what do we need to work on next? And in order to get my own head around, we've got a lot of moving parts. We have three legislative priorities. First is the short-term rental finalization. Um, we have sent it to, where are you? Yeah. Um, so we have sent, Greg has sent the last version that we worked on as a board, which was a year ago to the village attorney to say, okay, is there anything about this? Is there anything about case law that's changed since we look at, looked at this last time and needs to inform us? Um, and we had, we were having some discussion at the time about, um, parking permits within the residential parking zone. And obviously people are a lot, um, in that time. So we need to revisit that issue. Um, the faster we can get this through, and it's, it's been through substantial discussion with, um, we appointed an ad hoc committee to review it and make proposals to the board. We had significant discussion about it. We had those two items outstanding. Um, I'm hoping that we can get through it reasonably quickly so that we can bring parity to occupancy tax for short-term rentals and hotels. So, um, m- my recommendation on legislation is that we bundle the small cleanups that need to happen in streets and sidewalks and recreation with short-term rentals with workshops on the second and the ninth. You need to have a draft ready for the public on the sixteenth and, and estimate a public hearing on the thirtieth. Some of that depends on what people's, like, when we're going to have quorum, et cetera. So this is partially a calendar discussion, partially a process discussion. And I'll come back to the other projects after we get through the discussion of legislation. That's the pressing, that's the real pressing item at that stage. The, the, the folks, I know Laura is away on the ninth.
Right.
Um, do you have a sense of your travel schedule yet?
Yeah. I am on Zoom next week on October second. I am here on the ninth and I'm absent on the sixteenth.
Maybe I'm here on the ninth, the sixteenth, you're off completely.
Yeah, I have a.
Your travel, okay. What about twenty-third and thirtieth?
I'm here after that, for that.
In person. Uh, and you, does anybody else have travel or conflict in October?
I don't.
Okay. So how are we feeling about workshops on the second and the ninth? And then hopefully if you have, be able to have a draft ready for the public on the sixteenth. Obviously, those are estimates and depending on how our workshops go, it may, may need to shift, but I'm trying to set us up on an aggressive schedule.
So the workshops will be just kind of reviewing it and going through board?
Yeah, seeing what.
Legal issues?
Yeah, what John gives us in terms of feedback, um, and resolving the outstanding items to get it ready for public hearing.
And can we, um, Greg, can you send the board the draft where it is right now as well? But I haven't seen it here. Just to refresh our memory, that would help too. Um, yeah, that sounds good.
It was in, uh, it was August of twenty twenty-three. Yeah, when we last looked at it. Yeah, because then we, then we went into the hell that was the code update.
Right.
The fans were, I need to be here. Um, uh, we can certainly, um, include her in that conversation. Yeah, I told her today that we were, we were speaking with her about trees today and I told her that this was, uh, again, she was very happy to see that it was moving forward by the tree.
She wasn't running away.
Wasn't running away. Jen doesn't run away from anything. Um, okay, well, if, and thank you for bringing your availability. So, so let's plan to build agendas around those items. Streets and sidewalks, Jeff, Greg is, is drafting and Recreation Chapter, Tweets did a draft of it. I'm cleaning up. Um, in terms of thinking to the end of the year and what, where, what we need to be working on, um, we've got a couple of policy modifications. Tweets has drafted a social media policy. And we haven't looked at that yet. Um, but I would, you know, it's something that can, that can hold until, until after we get through the legislative stuff. We have talked a number of times about some heavy work that needs to happen in the employee manual and handbook um, related to exempt and non-exempt positions, um, uh, and sort of what are, what are best practice modifications to bring us more in line with where we need to be. And the reason that's important to do now is so that when we get to budget season next year, we're not, we're not juggling all of the pieces that are difficult related to stipends, et cetera, but. pieces that are difficult related to stipends, et cetera, but we have a cleaner, a cleaner base to work from. Greg had a recommendation and contacted NYMA.
They gave me, they gave me an HR professional to reach out to, so I'm going to send a draft of our current benefit guide to them so that they can rework it and incorporate some of the things that we've talked about, um, consolidating policy into one document, um, cleaning it up, making sure that we're able to make clear distinction between exempt and non-exempt, those kinds of things.
Can we, can we also try and learn in that process of, um, just updating our overtime policy?
That's exactly where we have to do exempt and non-exempt, so that we can get to that level.
It's a good moment for that?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not just talking about exempt and non-exempt, but which hours count towards the overtime hours for overtime?
One of the, one of the things that it will enable us to do, that Matt has wanted to do for a long time, is how we define the work week. So right now, because the work week is defined as Monday through Friday for all positions, it's a seven-day-a-week job, but they're get, they get overtime on the weekends, and what he would like to be able to do is flex the schedules among the operators so that they have, they have sort of, uh, shifting work days. So somebody might work Wednesday to Sunday, somebody might work, yeah.
So there's.
And we'd be able to do that with a, with new definition.
Um, I mean, we don't have to go into a discussion now, but, you know, I, I just would like some clarity about when the employee handbook gets revised versus when these changes might impact the budget.
Uh, that's what I'm saying. If we, we need to do this first, so that we're ready with a modified handbook when we go into budget season, starting at the end of January. That's why I'm pushing to do it now.
Okay, but we don't have to implement that, have everybody sign the new handbook until the new budget season, for example, right?
No, you mean one way to apply for staff, right? I believe so, but we'll find out with NYMA.
True, true, true.
And Tweeps has agreed to take the lead on this. Um, thank you.
It's, um, uh, that's really important, and thank you for doing that. I know it's not a.
No, I mean, no, it isn't, but it will, it will be more pleasanter now.
That's great. Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, that's, thanks for finding an HR.
And I think it's, it's gonna be, it'll be far, far more effective and less expensive.
I mean, I was. I was your HR.
Working with it, with the village attorney on the first round.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, and then in terms of other processes, process updates and modifications, we need, Erin has agreed to take ownership of taking all that we learned in the filming permit process and turning that into a package with Greg. Um, subdivision impact fee, we're gonna get done sooner than November eighth. Um, street opening process, um, just making sure that we're, we're following code and getting recommendation from, it's a, it's a workflow question. Getting recommendation from the superintendent, the board approving, and then issuing. Um, we started working today on the public, on public tree issue reporting and follow-up, a workflow for that. So Jen, Jen is gonna take the lead on that and aim to have it ready December fifth for us to review when we calendarize it. Um, what we're about to talk about tonight, we, we realized that there isn't really a defined process for how people get class on benches, um, and we should really have an application and and all that. So Kelly agreed to take the lead on that. Um, and Lillian, um, Lillian has offered to be the lead on rec applications. Um, and so since we're bundling rec with the October other public hearings, that you'll have the space to go.
From him, we'll get that.
Yeah. Um, and making sure that our, we have consistency with the commercial event details that we set up for films. Um, and, and then in terms of big projects, PBA contracts, um, I, we were, we were, it could have been done in July. One more request that came in July that took time to research. Um, and I think we're there now. I need to input the changes in the text sent to the attorney and then share it with all of you. PBA votes on it, we vote on it. Um, but I need to bring it all together into one document.
Well, we have, I mean, there's gonna be an impact to, um, expenses that might, because it's retroactive. Any, any changes that go into?
No, it won't be, oh, yes, from, from June one, yes, but Michelle has budgeted for that first. She has budgeted in a chunk to be, to be able to pay the retroactive.
Okay, so we don't expect the change much from expectations, so we made the budget.
Hmm, correct. And Michelle, Michelle was advised while we, while Tweeps and I have been doing negotiations of where, what direction things were taking. We're careful not to do too much in
Okay, thanks.
public session with this, but yes, she has set aside an amount.
Sure.
Um, Matt took the OIC position, um, and agreed to take it till the end of the year. Um, I think it makes sense to break him out of the PBA contract and establish a separate supervisory contract. We've talked about it in concept, but need to get some ideas in writing and bring them to you all. Um, we've got a series of easement executions. The village attorney has written, this is following up on storm damage and also um, dams. We've got a series of documents done now that I need to take to the prop, to the property owners. Um, so this is, it's it includes the dam easements, it's just not in a bullet. Yeah, these are the ones that are done. They're, they're ready to be executed. The dam, we're still having conversations about. Um, next item is paving projects. I would like us, we have a pot of, we have a pot of paving money. Um, Bugsy and Will have identified two priority spots at Lunterris, where you turn off Main Street onto Lunterris, it's just, it's totally pitted. Um, and Benedict, Will is, Will is, um, looking at them and not, but not in this, not in the spring, I mean, not in the fall.
No, that'd be bad even.
I mean, there's a ton, but thinking about what takes, what takes big hits, I mean, we're not, we need to have a larger conversation about, about paving than we're gonna have right now. Just telling you what they're looking at now in terms of what can they get done in the fall before the asphalt plants close that would make life a little better for everybody on heavily used streets. Um, so I need to come back to you once, once we know what, what it looks like, come back to you with that discussion. Um, but we don't have a lot of time on that because asphalt closes, so if, if we are gonna be able to do it, the asphalt, asphalt plants close around Thanksgiving, we gotta decide on it pretty quickly. So more, more from that when I have, from Will. Um, Village Hall repairs, Lauren and Laura talked about, we're working on it. We're aiming to get the door, we got the door, um, specs. Um, and which I need to forward to you. We got the door specs and Bugsy is getting boiler bids, hope to get that all in before Thanksgiving. And then the generator building TV booth. Got some information from, um, a trustee Emerita today who had some information about that building um, in a file at home, which we did not hear of, had at Village Hall, so that will help. So when you drop it all into a calendar in terms of deadlines and milestones, this last page is what it looks like. And this evening I thought, oh, there are two things that we have not, there's a big thing we haven't included, which will need to start in January, and that's renegotiating the contract with Royal. We're already three years into Royal.
Royal.
Um, so comments, questions, thoughts? It's gonna be a busy fall. That's pretty good.
Let's get down to the overview.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, now we just gotta hit, gotta hit all the, yeah, hit the, hit the milestones. And I, I'm very grateful for Greg bringing a level of of organization and planning that we, this is very helpful, we needed.
When, I'm sorry, can you remind me what you said for Royal?
Well, it expires in March, so we would need to start the negotiation process in January. Now, Royal has just been bought by, um, Concela, Casella, company out of Maine. Um, I had a conversation with member Jim Constantino, the, the attorney from, from Royal. In theory, and at least for now, all the staff who work with us stay, um, the attorney and the, and the staff contact stay. Um, so in theory, it's going to be a seamless transition for us, and I'm meeting Casella on the eighteenth of October. The, he's due, the, the CEO is doing a going around to meet all the municipalities they're working with thing. It will certainly be easier than it was the last go-round. When you think about modifications that we may, we may wanna make. Okay, that's it on that item. I just wanted to lay it out.
It was really awful.
You, that was before you came, yeah, you missed, you missed all the time. Um, okay, so direct, Greg is closing out that, and Greg is sending out the, the last version, which is eight thirty-one of chapter one hundred. Um, and I, I need to send out recreation and where are you with drafts on streets and sidewalks? For next week, okay.
Yep.
Cool. The rest of things are fun. Your packet, um, didn't have second requests came in related to benches. So there, Bugsy made a, Bugsy made a chart showing what benches are. Maybe, and which are available.
Oh, oh, yeah.
That's this, yeah.
Yeah, but that's.
It's a colored version too.
I like his title, lady.
I know, yeah, and on the bottom it says artwork by Robert Downey Jr.
I wanna frame this.
So there's one being asked for, uh, over on the, the boat club side. And by De, De Cunha, who was Phillipstown resident, whose late, late wife Gloria enjoyed spending time at the dock. You'd like to remember her with a bench. Um, and the other is at the opposite end, down on the Mumu's End, Mrs. Elise Odell, uh, to request, came in to request a bench in honor of her father-in-law. She explained that her husband has fond memories of picnicking with his dad and family at the dock during his childhood, and the family would like to remember him with a bench. At any rate, what this leads to um, is, uh, we, getting an application, and I've asked Kelly to do a little research on other municipalities that do memorials like this, like are we in a range? I don't know how, I don't know how the two hundred dollars was arrived at, and who knows when, it's been that for ever and ever.
We ordered the plaques ourselves today, how did it work?
They ordered the plaque.
Uh-huh.
Um, and they pay an installation fee. Bugsy does the installation, that's what the two hundred dollars is.
Okay.
And we have, it's not a new bench, an existing bench with a new plaque.
Getting a plaque put on the back three.
And the plaque is a backside. Um, it depends on how much language they want to, there are limits, and I don't know them in my head. There are limits to how big it can be, the size of the plank. And Bugsy works with the person to get the right size, but some of them are a single line, some of them are a couple of lines, and just as long as it doesn't get there are places where the it cuts out of hand. But we can certainly, so, so the idea here is establishing a process, so if we want to recommend a size and X number of lines, we can do that. Like Kelly's gonna put together a proposal.
So the items in white are benches that have already been dedicated, so we follow that.
The ones that have a plaque, the white little ones.
So the red ones would have, would have the memorial already, and we'd wanna stick with that.
Yeah.
I think you're great.
Okay, so, um, I, my feeling is we could um, take a vote on these and then going forward, make sure we've got a clear process.
So are we dedicating plaques or benches that have already been dedicated?
No, she marked them off
As.
As she, as they came, we requested. Statistically.
Yeah.
There you go. Um, does someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the application for both the De Cunha and Adelle benches as submitted.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is everybody's favorite Halloween parade application, it's the chamber, everything as usual, four thirty step, uh, it's four thirty gathering, five thirty step off, right? Four thirty to eight thirty that they asked for, um, to end to set up the candy and goodies down at the fan center. Any rain date, Sat- Saturday, October twenty-sixth, rain date on the twenty-seventh, discussion?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the application for the annual Halloween parade on ten twenty-sixth with the rain date of October twenty-seventh, starting at four thirty and ending at eight thirty.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And thank God, does not overlap with West Point, or that's what, the vote will be gone by then, did not overlap with Halloween homecoming.
We have a movie filming that day.
I'm glad you're here, Lillian, because I have a question, I have some questions about the next one. It's, uh, um, and I think this is the one you and I were talking about on the sidewalk the other day.
Yeah.
So this is an application for, it's the, it's sock, the soccer team, right?
It's Oktoberfest, Halloween, all of it.
So this is within the period of Halane's memory, uh, Halane's agreement contract to be in charge of the field. Have they okayed the mayor's park field use for this?
I have an email from Tom Cunningham saying that there were no activities being down, down the road.
We need to make sure that the file reflects that, and, um, so what we're approving right now is, is the pavilion use. Family, family fun day, uh, the certificate of insurance, has that come in since this was handed out to us?
I think we referred it as a Oktoberfest.
Yeah, Oktoberfest, that's what he wants, yes.
I did see signs for it.
Uh, yes, the insurance was sent in a little bit.
Okay, great. So any concerns?
Probably a lot of you.
Um, someone like to make a motion?
If you make a motion to approve the, uh, October Fas family field, the application that favors halt.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the applicant is a village resident, so it's a village resident rate. Anything else from you on that?
Nope, I'm actually sitting here right now forwarding emails that I, the email communication I had with Tom Cunningham at Halane to Greg, so he has it for the file.
Um, the last item that's a public discussion is, um, for village bills, does someone have the batch?
Um, let's make a motion that we approve the bills, batch seven, five, three, six, the amount of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents.
Okay. Favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so now, um, I would like to make a motion to enter, um, executive session to discuss a matter related to public bargaining. Second, on favor?
Aye.
We'll be turning off the video.
Second. Aye.
Okay, so it's eight twenty-five. I have made a motion to, to exit executive session, and trustee Starbuck seconded. We all voted in favor to exit executive session. Um, so, uh, we have been discussing memorandums of agreements, um, related to commercial details for police officers and the officer in charge. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve or to
For the mayor to sign.
For the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement with the, um, adjustment of removing a line, the language, well, the addition of the language and removing the permit that I will charge for. Um, but, and do we do them separately or can we do them together?
I think you can do that.
All right, and also, um, for the mayor to sign the revised memorandum of agreement with the same adjustments on that one as well.
For the OIC and for the, I need the officers. Second, second, on favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Most of you are jonesing.
I will second that. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.